On this episode of NorCal News Now, we're speaking with Chico City Council member Andrew Coolidge. I'm your host, Mike Richman. And our guest on today's show, as I mentioned, is an incumbent Chico City Council member who's running for reelection this November. He's graduate of CSU Chico and a long-term small business owner here in town. He chairs the Butte County Air Quality Management District Board, as well as the City Council's Internal Affairs Committee. And he's also the founder of the Recycle Arts Commission, Art Commission, I'm sorry, which we're going to explore a little bit later on this show. So Andrew Coolidge, welcome to NorCal News Now.
Thanks so much. Thanks for having me.
Of course. Thanks for joining us today. It's always good to get a chance to meet somebody new we've never met before.
Absolutely.
So thank you for joining us. Well, you know, as I mentioned, as people I think can get an idea from that little intro, I just did a little bit of it. There's a lot more there that I didn't get to. You've had a wide variety of experiences in your career. So what was your motivation for getting into politics, the world of politics?
Well, I've always had a love for politics, strangely enough, which that sounds really odd when someone says, especially in today's climate, like, why would anybody love politics? But, you know, as a kid, I always liked it. It was a much gentler time. It really was a much better time in a lot of respects. But no, I always liked that aspect of it. But it wasn't really, I didn't really catch the bug to run for office until about 2011. Because I saw a lot of things going on with the city at that time. You know, I'd always been pretty politically astute. I'd always looked into what was going on in the city, you know, our city. And being a citizen here for a long time, I'm really concerned about it. And I have two kids. And at the time, they were obviously a little younger back in 2012 than they are now. And I just went, you know, I've got to run for office. I've got to fix some of these problems. And I kind of preached, if you will, that the city was on the path of financial disaster. And we had a lot of bad things heading our way. And I did not win that first race in 2012. I lost that one by a whopping 222 votes. So I tell people, your vote's super important.
Yes, absolutely.
Because election night, it was eight votes. There were four seats. I was in fifth place behind Randall Stone. I had eight vote spread. So it's kind of like, well, you go to bed and maybe hope for better results in the morning. But we waited, I think, three weeks for the results of that race. But really, the motivation was, you know, I had young kids. I wanted to see a good future for them in Chico. You know, during that campaign, I talked a lot about the finances. I didn't get a lot of serious respect for those conversations during that time. People had used words like, yeah, you're crazy. Everything's fine. The city's good. Public officials at the time kind of said the same exact thing. And then low and behold, 2013, we find Chico's right on the verge of bankruptcy. We're $20 million in the hole, and the sky is falling. So it's kind of nice that it proved out, at least that I was right, but a really bad way to be right. So at that point in time, I decided to run for office again. And, you know, it obviously was taken a little more serious because I had preached that we, you know, were on this path to the financial ruin for the city of Chico. So pushed forward. And in 2014, was the top vote getter, which was a nice change of affairs. So, yeah.
And, you know, what you mentioned there, I think is really important for people to remember. I mean, you know, you talk about that number of votes. Your vote does really count, especially in local elections. And people don't think about the local elections enough.
And while we've had national, where they matter too, just ask anybody in Florida. But, you know, I try to stress, when I have like, a young group come in, because a lot of times, I'll host young groups at council chambers, whether it's students from schools, or Boy Scouts, Cub Scout groups, whatever it might be, Girl Scouts coming in for a badge, something of that nature. I'll talk to them about the importance of participating in our democracy. So, you know, a lot of people just vote top of the ticket. They care about who's running for president. They care about who's running for governor. Those really are not the people who affect your daily life. What affects your daily life is your local city. So, you know, I tell them, like, really, you want to be concerned about the issues that surround you immediately first. And certainly, the national stuff's important. But, you know, a decision that affects the very road you live on is pretty close to home. So, you know, it was, it was something where I just, I tried to tell them, like, you know, about my experience in that eight votes on election night, and then the 222 votes through that campaign. And you're talking about a city that has, you know, 44,000 voters. So that's a less than 1.1% difference. And, you know, enough, obviously, to do a recount. But I didn't want to make the city go through that. And it's never a fun process. And so I just licked my wounds and retreated for two years. But, you know, you come back stronger and harder. And you, you know, and having been a little right about what was going on economically, it helped me march back there. But, yeah, I really try to stress to young folks when I talk to them, just how important it is to register and to vote and be informed. Because we have plenty of people who vote and are not informed. And that's a scary process. So, you know, if you can get people in there who know what they're doing, yeah.
Well, you know, I mean, a lot of people talk about rights within this country. And rights, of course, are a bedrock of our republic. But the flip side of rights are responsibilities. I talked about it on the show a lot. And voting is a major responsibility.
It is.
You know, if you don't vote, I mean, everybody's got a voice in the country. But if you don't vote, you really aren't taking advantage of your voice.
Well, no. And you can scream and yell and do whatever you want. You can go on Facebook and blog about it for hours, or however you want to do it. But in the end, if you're not a voting citizen, you're really not making any difference. Because that actually is, you know, the people who represent you and represent your opinions. And those are the people you want in office. And that varies. I mean, you know, I find a lot of people who go, you know, I'm really liberal, but on local issues, I tend to be really conservative, or vice versa, just because they have a different set of beliefs when it comes to that. And I think that's why these offices are, you know, nonpartisan, is because, you know, I find people who go, you know, well, Andrew, I may not agree with your beliefs on the larger scale. But when it comes to the financial issues of our city, crime issues of our city, and, you know, things along those lines, maybe the historic aspects or the art aspects, like, yeah, we match up pretty darn close. So, you know, I just tell people to have an open mind about it, too, because it really matters. You know, and I, elections have been decided in this town by just a handful of votes. So, yeah.
Well, I'm glad you brought up partisanship, because, I mean, the council is a nonpartisan body.
It is.
Technically.
Technically.
Although, you know, I mean, certainly, local media will talk about who the progressive wings are, who the liberal wing, who the conservative wings are.
They do.
You know, what slate is, who's where, and what team, all this kind of stuff. Partisanship is something that hasn't been maybe as much of an issue, not only in this local locality, but in local elections. But now it is more.
It is.
Certainly nationally, it is. And it always has been nationally. It's getting worse and worse in that way. What attributes to that in your mind? And how do we solve that in your mind?
Yeah. Well, and I can tell you, on a national level, I am not thrilled at all with where we're at. And I guess some people are. I guess some people are happy with it. But I really tried to pay as a little attention, you know, be informed, but yet not listen to the rhetoric on either side of the aisle, because I just, I just don't have a love for it. I can't stand that kind of back and forth that is not really doing anything good about forwarding the conversation. So, and, you know, we do have a little bit of that. I would be the first one to admit it, with the city council races. You know, Chico is a very political town. It has been a very political town. We've had some pretty big, you know, heavy hitters come from our town over the years. But, you know, really, I look at it and go, I'd love the voters to be more nonpartisan in their view of the city council races. At the same time, too, for someone to run from a nonpartisan position is very difficult, because you lack that initial support. And I think that's a problem.
Yeah.
I'm not the biggest fan of political parties as a whole, on the national level, because I think they drive us apart. And, you know, we've had plenty of our forefathers who talked about that and warned of it. But it is the system we have. But Chico politics can be very nasty. I think the council disagrees on things sometimes, because, simply because of the way everybody lines up on the party, and not because of the real idea that's being discussed.
Yeah. I mean, and you've crossed that aisle yourself.
I have.
But we'll talk about that later on, on the show. But I mean, this idea that you can't compromise, I mean, government is the art of compromise.
Yeah.
It's intended to be that way.
It is. It is. And that's because, you know, it's intended to move, and people get frustrated with it. And I understand the frustration. But it's intended to move slowly. So you don't have rapid change, which makes sense. Rapid change brings about chaos. So you want it to be slow, natural progression of change. And you want it to be a big movement to actually instill and find that change. And that makes sense. That's why, you know, I tell people, you got to have some patience when it comes to the city government, whether we're doing a project, or if we're looking at maybe an upgrade to a street, or something like that. It's a process. It takes several years, because we're not going to just tomorrow make a decision to do something quickly. But, you know, in looking at that, you just, you kind of find that, well, what I found, and it was a little bit discouraging, is when I came into office, trying to, and it's in no ways against the people who were sitting in the seats when I got there. But I found it very difficult to reach across the aisle. And I found that my counterparts on the other side of the political spectrum were very unwilling to make a compromise. And I'm certain that probably people on my side of the aisle, you know, were facing similar circumstances, that they were having just as a hard time as I was. And that was a little discouraging, because I really thought I could reach out to someone who, you know, didn't necessarily share my political views. We could bring up issue A, B, or C, whatever it might be, and go, look, what do you think? What do I think? Let's come to a nice compromise.
But that's not how it works, as you're saying.
And it's not. And it's not, it may be from the dais when we're actually having the conversation. We may find some middle ground. And I really try to sometimes push that middle ground. If anyone's really familiar with my views on the council, when it, you know, comes to the Arts Commission, or something of that nature, I really try to push a middle ground. But it's really hard to do that on the major issues, which is, you know, of course, policy, you know, crime aspects, budget, things along those lines. And I think we should have more of that. I'd love to have more of that. I've reached out to a couple of the folks running on, you know, the other side, and told them, you know, when you get in there, whether, you know, we're in control, or you're in control, let's sit down and talk. Because there's a lot of stuff in this town that we need to work on. That's really simple stuff.
Well, how do citizens help that? I mean, I think that what I found as a citizen, not being involved in the political realm, other than through something like this show, is that we want to have our team. You know, we want to know who our team is. We want to know that the people that we elect, who are on our team, are going to do what we want them to do. And the idea of going to compromise, it sounds good in theory, but when the rubber meets the road, people are like, well, I don't want, I don't want that tax, that tax policy. I don't want this crime policy. I don't want whatever, because it's not what I believe in. So how do we help our elected officials understand what we want, and help them achieve a better result for all of us, for them and for the city?
Well, and I think sometimes, and I really wish it wasn't this way. I mean, I really wish there was more conversation amongst, on the dais, and amongst the counselors, to come up with that compromise sometimes. But I think when the community asks us to, you know, look, we have this problem, and not go, you have to do X, Y, or Z, but we have to get this solved. You guys have to meet in the middle. And I think that the thing that I would ask of our community is to remind us to sometimes meet in the middle. That, that, you know, because, and if you actually look at the voter registration for our town, the middle is the biggest growing population of the city. And there are a lot of people who kind of sit there in the middle and go, you know, a nice compromise might solve all problems.
Yeah, or many of them at least. Sure. We're not going to solve everything all the time, or even most of the time.
Well, and I think you could compromise, and obviously, you can't swap out your vote for someone else's vote, and things like that. Those aren't legal. But you could certainly have a conversation where, you know what, yeah, on particular laws, let's say, that deal with transients, or crime, or homeless issues, or something like that. Like, look, we'll give a little over here, if you give a little over there.
You know, on this show, I mean, we talked about some issues already. We talked about issues. We like to kind of delve into that. But we want to kind of get to know you, too. I think it's important, because I think that, we talked about it before the show started, you know, you don't always know who the people are behind, that are on the dais, or that are running for office. So, you know, you mentioned music, for instance, on your website. You love all kinds of music. So, you know, in terms of a musician, or an actor, or an artist, or writer, whatever it is, who would be somebody that you'd look at, and say, wow, that person really, their art has changed my life, or I've learned something, or has given me some sort of insight into the human condition, or whatever it may be?
You know, I tend, I'm an English literature major, which has nothing to do with the business I run.
Me, too. That's what I, that's what I, that's what I graduated with as well.
Yeah. So I tell people, like, if you, you know, you want to discuss Shakespeare, I'm certainly able to do that. You know, complicated calculus equations, probably not my idea of fun. But, you know, I've always enjoyed reading the transcendentalists of, you know, the American genre, and found a lot of joy with, you know, Henry David Thoreau, or Walt Whitman, or John Steinbeck. Those have always tended to be my favorite writers.
And what is it about, what is it about that, that particular genre that gets to you?
You know, just the connectivity of people, and both through life and through thought, and kind of how that weaves through everything we do. And obviously, the comfort of that being provided possibly afterlife as well. You know, there's, you go to the Grapes of Wrath, and there's the, you know, I'll be there kind of speech at the end, when, you know, we're doing this and that. Yeah, exactly. And it's something where, I love the comforting aspect of that, and the connectivity to the grander scheme of things. You know, I think that's a lot of reason why people like, still listening to live radio, or watching TV, because, rather than watching a pre-recorded video of something, because there's some feel of connectivity.
Community, yeah.
Yeah. And I really think that's a big feeling that we are, as we move forward on the technological stuff, we're missing out on, too. So that's just always where my, you know, I certainly like some of the British authors, and, yeah, I have, you know, Don't Mind J.D. Salinger, or, you know, anything like that. But, but, yeah, if I, if I have to pick a book to sit down with, and really get comfortable with, I'd pretty much be with those authors.
Yeah, like Walden, or something like that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good. I like that. Well, let's get back to the issues. Because I think that that's really important. I'm glad we got a little bit of the behind the scenes of Andrew Coolidge and all of that.
Well, you know, and I would say about that point, too, is, you know, I've walked a lot of homes in Chico through this campaign. This one, I'm just starting to, back in 2014, I got the bike, and I biked to a lot of homes. 2012, I pulled a little red wagon all around Chico. But that was grueling. Pulling that wagon was just grueling. The bicycle was much faster, much better. But what I found is, is that sometimes I would come to people's door, and they would just recognize my name and go, nope, don't want to talk to you. And I'd find myself on the other side of that slammed door, because sometimes it was slammed, going, you know, I'm a human being. And I have real, you know, I'm no different than you. I want my kids to do better than I'm doing. I want them to have a secure place to live. We might have different ideas on how that actually comes together.
Sure.
But just because of the politics, you're, you know, so that kind of, you know, I like communicating that. And that's what I would usually say is, you know, I'm human. I'm still a human being.
Well, and it's a, it's a local race. Again, I mean, I could see that with somebody like a Donald Trump.
You're going to see me at the grocery store.
Somebody that, you know, is at a level where it's like, you know, I never ever see him. I want to tell him what I think right now.
Right. Oh, absolutely.
You know, you go to Chico City Council.
Oh, they could call me on the phone. Yeah.
Right. You can see, yeah.
Come downtown. They're going to see me in the grocery store. And I've made that point to more than one person, especially on Facebook, as it gets, you know, back and forth, and people start to kind of, you know, they've got the shield of protection. So they're, they're saying things they might not normally in public.
Absolutely.
And I would say to them, like, you know, you might end up seeing me at the grocery store next week. So I hope you feel comfortable with the things that you're saying.
That's right.
And not because I'm going to say anything about it, but I'm going to be able to look in the eyes.
And say, hey.
And, you know, go, you know, is that really what you want to say? And I'll probably be there with my kid. And, you know, that's kind of a, but, you know, I think people need to realize that, you know, each of us, and I really do think, with this council, or the past council, or any of them for that matter, I do think we all sit up there with a real love and concern for Chico. I think everybody running in this race is doing it because, for all the right reasons. You know, I don't think anyone's up there for the wrong reason necessarily. So, and I'm not sure what that wrong reason would be. But, but it seems to me that, that the, you know, they really do have a love for, for their city.
Yeah. It's a great city.
It is.
For those of us that didn't grow up here, it's a great city. And it has a lot of special aspects to it.
Yeah. I didn't get to grow up here. So, but I got here as soon as I could.
Me, too. Yeah. Well, I got here a little late. But it was, it's been a great, great place to live. All right. Well, let's go back to the issues, because I do want to get to, get to those. And there's a lot that's going on in the city, both the financial realm and social realm. There's a lot. I mean, you think about all the issues that are facing the city. We have the move of the scrap metal yard, and homelessness, the housing issue, infrastructure, you know. There's a lot that here that needs to be thought of and addressed. When you think of the city, and you think of the issues facing the city, and you hear from constituents, either the people that voted for you, or didn't vote for you, what are they saying? Are there top of the mind issues, things they want to make sure it gets attention?
What I find coming back more than anything else, and it's not, and I'd like to make a real clear distinction, it's, at least, this is how I view it. I view us as having a homeless issue. But I also view us as having a transient issue. And the separation of that is, someone who tends to be, you know, someone who's homeless either has a, some kind of problem, either mental, or an addiction problem, that's stopping them from actually obtaining housing, and becoming a member of society where they can function and participate. Transient, to me, is, and it's for lack of no better term, to be honest, is someone who is more apt to be, you know, parting out bicycles in the, in the park, stealing packages from someone's doorstep, you know, living some kind of drug lifestyle of some shape or form, and living from day to day wherever they can, in the creeks, or, you know, throughout the city. You know, certainly, there's, it's a very deep issue. You can talk about the rights of people to live wherever they, so, so see fits. You can talk about our service providers. You can talk about, you know, lack of affordable housing in the state of California. But the, at the final say of it, what you see is that this issue is built on multiple levels. And also, I think the city's response to it, at least from the council level, has been a bit slow. You know, I've pushed forward some issues. And I tell people that I am trying to bring forward issues that I think are both positive and, so, help-based and enforcement-based, that they shouldn't just be strictly enforcement-based. Like, our goal should not be just driving people out of town. And I hear from a lot of people who say, just, just get them out. Bust them out. Get them out. We don't want them here. I don't care where they go. And then you have the other side that says, oh, we got to help them. We got to help everybody. They should be able to live wherever they want. I certainly do not fall into either of those camps.
And it's a tough issue.
It's a tough issue. No, and I, and I, and I give you credit for addressing it, because it is a tough issue. I know it's one that a lot of constituents are asking about. And I would say, from people I hear, probably 70% of the people talk about that issue first thing out of the gate. And they usually have a very strong opinion. They're usually on one side or the other. And I, you know, a lot of times preach the compromise. But, you know, whereas, you know, I'm not against the tiny house village for people who are 55 plus, coming into town and providing homes, especially in this environment, when home costs are just escalating through the roof.
Well, that's another part of the equation.
It is a huge part of the equation. And then I'm certainly not against, you know, maybe enforcing a sit-lay ordinance, or, you know, park, you know, park closure time. So I think all those things are very reasonable expectations of the public that we serve, that we should help. And there should be an expectation to help those who cannot help themselves. And there should also be an expectation that you cannot, you know, park out and camp in front of someone's business, and not allow them to open the front door seven days a week. It's just, I, you know, I think passing both of those at the same time, you're providing a little help, at the same time, you're providing a little enforcement. So.
And do you feel like that, that this idea that we have mental health professionals working with the police now to try to engage with people that are maybe having some stressful?
Yeah. It's been a big priority of mine. I mean, mental health in this county spends upwards of $54 million a year to address mental health issues, which is a huge amount of money. And I don't think we necessarily get the big bang for a buck, either. I can't say that that's the most effectively spent money. I know those in charge would say it is, and, or at least, we do a pretty good job. I think we do a pretty good job. But, no, I've been happy that we have the mental health professionals joining, you know, the officers when they can, and making some progress that way. I think that was a big step with the council. But at the same time, too, we need much, much more. I mean, in terms of the mental health services.
But we're spending too much already.
We are. We are spending.
And how do we get much, much more? I mean, I know these are hard questions.
No, no. And you're completely right. I think part of the problem was, and I would blame a, what's a well-renowned conservative for it, is Ronald Reagan taking away the mental institutions, although there were substantial problems with them at the time. You know, I think that they should have been reformed, and would have been a good place for people to go. Because now, what you have is impacted county services that simply cannot provide for them, that are wasting a fair amount of taxpayer money, or at least spending a fair amount.
Well, what about the idea that people who want to live, that are in the circumstances where they don't want to be in institutions such as that? They want to have the freedom to live the way that they perhaps want to live. I mean, they want support, but they also perhaps want to have some freedom to live in their own way. How do you respond to that?
They do. And unfortunately, my response to that, well, it's not unfortunate, my response, I should dial that back. What I would say is, unfortunately, we are very much a nation of laws, and we are a society. So we must, you know, yeah, I mean, it sounds great, like, just leave me alone. I'll camp in the park. I'll, I'll do whatever I want to do. I'll, you know, rummage through someone's trash for whatever I need, or, you know, I'll go down to the shelter and grab my meal. That's not really what those services are designed for. The park certainly isn't designed for people to be camping in it. The homeless shelters, whether it's Torius, or Jesus Center, or some of our other ones, they're not designed for having people on an unlimited basis. And I think we need to actually have a plan nationwide. And I think it needs to be an issue that's discussed nationwide, that has a real, actual target with a real goal. Because as much as I love our service providers, and think they do wonderful things, they are never talking about how to end their job.
Yeah. And that's, that's true. I mean, because it is not just a Chico issue.
It's not.
You know, you talk about transients. There are some transients that are in that population. There's also a lot, most people that are Chico locals, people that have been here for most of their life.
Yes.
And they're in a circumstance where they don't have a home, and part of it is housing. And housing's another issue that's really tied in with that, too.
Yeah. And housing is another issue that's always mentioned. You know, the housing crisis in California, more than anywhere else in the nation, is the cause. And I've read lots of economic studies on why it exists. And it's multifaceted. And it makes complete sense when you actually look at it, is, one, is, we have this beautiful coastline where everybody would love to build a house. So people come to the state, and with that expectation, they can't afford a house, anywhere close to it. So they'll pay a small mint to even have a view of it. But we have a huge coastline, and the coastline areas are incredibly impacted with people. The rents there tend to be more expensive than anywhere else in the state. And that overflows. So we have, you know, and of course, you go to somewhere like the Bay Area, and everybody knows these stories, is you have someone who, you know, works a job as a nurse, or as a, you know, at a gas station. And they, they can't afford to live in the city they're working in.
Anywhere close to it, right.
And they're commuting, and they're getting a great pay for that particular profession in the city. But it's not doing anyone any good. You know, the other side of that coin is not only the demand side of it, but the fact that California builds houses with more regulations than anywhere else in the world. Our standards are, I would, fair to, I think it's fair to say that the standards that California has for housing, they'll be great, because they provide us all nice homes with every single, you know, protection and aspect that we go for, are completely ridiculous in some respects. Because they rise the cost of a house to the point that it makes them unaffordable.
Yep.
And you see homes in Texas being built, which are two to three times the size of the houses in California. But because of the code, because of, obviously, we need earthquake standards, things like that. But they have theirs for, you know, hurricanes and things along the lines. But, and because of city permitting fees, because of state costs, because of all the various government agencies involved, the costs of those homes are expensive.
Yeah. And it does. Especially, I mean, in California, I know, you do see that, that rolling perspective of people that come from the Bay Area, say, they come up to Chico, and they're like, wow, look what I can get for $600,000. This house would be a million five, right?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
In the city, or Walnut Creek, or wherever it may be. I mean, it looks like a bargain and a half. Meanwhile, people in this town who want to get that house for $300,000 or and it, that does tend to put more pressure on.
Well, and we're really having an absence of starting, starter homes. And so what will either happen is, we will become a state of rich retirees at some point in time. Or we are going to lose all those, you know, the basics, in terms of having people try to stay here. We're going to create a class of people that can't afford housing, so they stay anywhere they can.
Young families, yeah.
Yeah. To earn the money, that's great, but not enough to live, before they bail out and go to another state. So I think we're going to have a little bit of a brain drain in California unless we... So I think we're going to have a little bit of a brain drain in California unless we, uh, build smarter and we reduce some of our costs. And, you know, I see that at the city level too, and I see that across the board. I can't tell you how many votes there. I've been a six to one and we will literally have a discussion about how hard it is for a family to get a house. And then the city of Chico, in the very next vote, we will turn around as council and add $5,000 to the cost of the house. And there's a lot of arguments to be made through that, you know, certainly all my counterparts would go, well, you have to do what's fair and reasonable to pay our staff. Uh, you have to do it. So there's at least some money for affordable housing put aside. But, you know, to me, it makes more sense to build cheaper, well-constructed homes than to tack on 50, 60,000 dollars.
But do the builders want to build those homes? Is the other side of that equation?
Uh, the builders want to build homes that are profitable. And, you know, family houses are profitable. Um, the city has talked and there has been a discussion as of late of, um, possibly requiring more inclusionary type development. Uh, cities are doing that. It's not necessarily, uh, because developers don't want to build it. It doesn't necessarily work either. So it's a very complicated problem spurred by a state that has several major financial issues. So it, and it rolls downhill and here we are trying to deal with it. So.
So you've been on the council, as you mentioned now, for, this is your second term, I think.
No, this is, I'll be running for my second, second term. Yes.
Um, so in that time, uh, what have been one or two things that you've seen the council do that you really think really were, really moved the ball down the field for the city? And what are a couple of things that you think maybe were issues that didn't work out the way that you would have liked them to work out?
Those. I've had some of those.
Which, which would you like to talk about first? The good news or the bad news?
Uh, well, always the good news, right? Right? Um, at least that's what my kids answer when they, when I, you want the good news or the bad? They always want the good news first. No, I, I think the best thing that the city of Chico's done and the council as a whole, uh, because most of these votes were 7-0 votes. Uh, and that's where I tell people is, yeah, we definitely are a partisan council, but, you know, 70, 80% of our votes are 7-0. And that's not all procedural either. That's not just approving the consent agenda. That's on some pretty tough budgetary items. Um, but really putting back the city on the financial path, at least to success, if you take CalPERS out of the picture. Cause CalPERS is the 800-pound grill in the room that's going to eventually eat up two-thirds of the state's, uh, cities in the, in, in the state of California because of its impending disaster. But, but let's hope that the governor and the legislature are right that, um, because they're betting on the economy fixing that issue. And so far that bet's been okay, but we'll see how it plays out long-term. But we still have to prepare for it. But that aside, um, you know, kind of when I came into office, it was close to $20 million in debt. And, uh, we had been through some major cuts. So I can tell you without a doubt that I was very thrilled, uh, over these last four years to reduce that debt to, um, close to less than $6 million. Start building up a lot of our reserve funds, um, to put money away for the pension liability into an investment account that's very conservative growth, but yet will help fuel some of our pension responsibility, which is in excess of $100 million. It's pretty huge. Um, but that, we're at least looking at that. And we are one of the cities, uh, ahead of the, the game. We are one of the few cities that are setting aside that money now because we can't get out of that system. Um, because if we did, we'd have to pay back all of that money immediately, which obviously is out of the question. So, um, I think restaffing of the police department has been huge. Um, you know, the, the latest numbers have come out on crime and we've made over the summer a substantial difference in terms of the number of crimes. Uh, and that's finally four years of putting cops back on the job. So, you know, when I took office, we had 65 officers. We're now around 95 officers. Um, I'm pushing forward a measure to try to keep the street crimes, uh, unit functioning year-round. Even if it's a smaller reduced, street crimes, you know, I want something out there to, to work on those, you know, community crimes. The, the ones that happen in your, you know, you had your front door, whether it's your package, whether it's your bicycle, whether it's, you know, uh, scaring your kid to death, uh, because someone chases him down trying to grab his wallet or something of that nature. So, um, that I think is a big area where we need to focus on next. And, um, but we've had some great success. Uh, you know, some things for me that have been huge success as I look at the council and, and what I've contributed besides just one vote of, of seven or four, or whatever it might be. Um, I pushed through an LED light program I'm very proud of. Saves the city about a quarter million dollars a year. Um, you know, pretty simple, but the city wasn't doing it. And I started pushing for that before I came into office. And actually, um, you know, we, we got it through and the lights have been replaced. And people don't seem to mind as much as they did the very first week they were replaced, because I wasn't crazy about them either. But it is saving the city a ton of money. And, um, you know, I'm very proud of, uh, I had a citizen come to me and recommend that we do a tree planting and, and spruce up, um, the One Mile Recreation Area. And, and we were able to do that and we were able to plant 100 new trees into there. And then, uh, I got some good news yesterday, actually, from Chico Tree Advocates that were, got a grant. The new urban forester has got a grant to plant 700 new trees around Chico. And those are, you know, certainly people go, oh, trees, Andrew, really? You know? Well, I can tell you this is our community wouldn't be what it is without those trees. And we need to start planning for us to keep it that way for, you know, the next 50 to 100 years. So if we don't, and, and that was really my thing with, um, you know, Lower Park and the One Mile Recreation Area. Like, look, if we don't start planting little trees, 30 years, there's not going to be any medium trees to take over the big trees. So, um, you know, the other thing that was very controversial and, and again, one of these things where I was kind of in the middle, uh, I sometimes tend to be, um, is, uh, the Arts Commission was basically on the verge of being eliminated and I really pushed for it to be kept. Um, I think I did a nice compromise in terms of bringing it forward. So we, they'd have a limited number of meetings because of course the time that staff was spending at those meetings was a big concern. Um, and then we used 1% of TOT, which the initial vote was for 2%, which I wasn't crazy about. And then there was a vote to not do anything, which I wasn't crazy about either. And we came to a nice compromise on it, which was 1%.
Well, and that was one thing I wanted to mention as well, because I know that you did, that was an instance where you did work with, I think you were the only one on, again, your side of the aisle to, to come in and work with the, the progressives on that.
Yeah.
That 1% of the hotel, the, the, the tax that was dedicated to that. And you see, you see arts as a winner. You see arts as a revenue generator.
I do. Well, I mean, if you look at any of the major cities or any of the cities that people even hold dear in terms of, um, you know, where is a destination that they can go and enjoy? They usually have some kind of art and culture that people are enjoying. So whether it be, you know, plays or, you know, you can take an Ashland for an example, which has, you know, an immense tourism, uh, draw. And I don't think that we can get to that. It's certainly not right away, but I think long-term goal, it sounds great to me. Um, you know, even the university events draw people from outside the area. And, you know, we have almost with, without a doubt, um, had a huge amount of revenue coming in this community through the amazing things that either the university is able to present or that now some of our new local museums are able to present or, uh, some of our historic landmarks like, uh, Bidwell Mansion. Um, you know, not originally being from here, being from the Yuba Sutter area. I took the bus up to Bidwell Mansion as a kid and walked through it. And I remember I had a blind tour guide, which was the most interesting thing. She knew every single thing in every single room. It was absolutely amazing. Something I'll remember for the rest of my life and I was probably in third grade. Um, but, uh, yeah, I, I mean, the arts has a real important, uh, place in an economic plan. And I think sometimes that's looked over. But, you know, I do come from a background of producing street fairs and festivals and now doing home shows and bridal shows here in town. And, you know, I can tell you those events, um, yeah, 80, 90% of our vendors are local, but we're bringing in 10% from outside the community. And they're getting, buying rooms and they're, um, you know, they're, they're eating meals and they're filling up on gas. And then, um, you know, we'll book anywhere from 30 to 40, uh, rooms at the local hotels is what we track. And then of course, business-wise, I love the aspects of the show, particularly the bridal shows, because you can really see like, okay, you know, this particular business, nobody knew about, startup business, uh, booked 17, you know, weddings from the show, but that is a huge economic influence because they would have had to either do it themselves or go out of town.
And like I say, you don't mind the 1% of the TOT tax.
No, no, I think it's a really good investment, to be honest. Yeah. I, I think it will bring in way more. Um, you know, I think our art is very important. It's, I, I'd be darned if you wouldn't see a postcard from this town that either mentions, well, obviously it seemed that mentioned Chico State, but the other things are, you know, the hands, the Bidwell Mansion. You know, these are the things that people cherish and make our community unique. And, uh, we've got some great public art. We've gotten some new paintings or on buildings around town that are fantastic. Um, I can think of several, uh, just, just in the past six, seven months that have come up that have been absolutely wonderful and add really to the character of our town. So I, I think it makes a big difference.
Agree. And, you know, you, you are a fiscal conservative. I think that we, we talked about that.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
That's, that's, that's good. I think that, I, I mean, I, I am, uh, I'm in support of, of being very careful.
Sure. Well, it's your money.
Exactly. I mean, as a taxpayer, absolutely. Um, you know, with that said, I think that, you know, I always, I always think back to the debates between, you know, Ronald Reagan and Tip O'Neill a generation or two ago. Cause you know, O'Neill would always say, well, I'm a big spender. You know, I want, I want taxes. I want to spend money on programs. I want to spend money giving to people. Um, you know, and he, that was his position. And he was, he was very clear about that. Reagan was very much about, well, the revenues will be higher if we, you know, don't tax as much. And it's, it's the trickle-down theory. So as a fiscal conservative, you know, certainly I understand that we want to hold taxes down. You, I'm sure want to hold taxes as much as you can. But, you know, you, there is, a city like Chico needs funds.
Yep.
To do things with. So how do you, in your mind, think about the balance of those two things when you're thinking about new taxes or a TOT?
I do. Well, and, you know, it's, um, we, we've had some things where I've wavered on that. Certainly we did like a room fee for the, uh, council chambers. And that was something that, you know, that was one that I thought was appropriate just because of, and that was a very direct link. It was right to the cause of, you know, the, well, people are using the room. The room is degrading.
Right.
We need to up the fee. So when somebody uses it, we have the money to recoup the staff time to open the doors and everything else. Okay. Makes a lot of sense. That's an easy one. Um, you know, in terms of, and, and we're not the only city, of course, that, um, or full-service city, I should say, we're not the only full-service city that doesn't have a, um, sales tax increase. But a lot of them do. And, and we're certainly in the, the quarter of, of the cities our size who do not. You know, there's, there's more of them than, that do than, than do not. And some of our neighboring towns have passed them as well. Um, and it does help them generate revenue. But, you know, I like to look at it and maybe it's a little too supply-side in, in terms of my view of it. But, you know, I can tell you that people go to states where there are no, you know, taxes, uh, sales tax to buy items. And I don't think that's necessary. I don't think anyone's making that decision in, in Orville. Like, oh, we better drive up to Chico. Things are, you know, half a cent cheaper. Um, but I think if we hold the line on it, I think it does at, at the end of each year, actually make a difference in the people's pocketbook. Um, I think that frees up a little more money for them to spend. Uh, I think we can make things work with the budget that we have. Uh, I am open to the ideas of exploring, uh, bond revenue for, uh, road improvements. Uh, council member, uh, Sorenson just brought that forward, uh, a few meetings ago, and we're going to look at that. And I think that's actually to get our roads up to date because during our financial crisis and digging out of this giant hole, roads have certainly been neglected in this community. And I think maybe a five-year bond where you're, you're floating a couple, at least a couple of million dollars each year. Bond debt's very predictable to pay. Um, and we need a drastic increase to put our roads back into the right working order. And, um, you know, that's probably the third issue that I hear about mostly too.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure improvements. Um, yeah, certainly after transient slash crime issues. Yeah. Down the line there, it's, it's certainly infrastructure. And, and we do, I mean, I, I can tell you, I, I drive all those roads myself.
Sure.
And, uh, people go, you know, you know how bad my road is? And I go, yeah, I went down it today. And your road sometimes is my road too. Um, but, uh, yeah, yeah. So we need to make some strides in that area as well.
But you do think, just to understand you clearly, you do, you do see the value in, in investing in things like infrastructure and, and raising bond, as you mentioned, to help cover it is, is a necessary expenditure for you?
It is. And I think it would actually be a way to do it where we have a reliable payment. And that's really what I like seeing is, you know, look, if we're going to incur a debt, I don't necessarily mind the city incurring a debt as long as it's predictable payback. So to me that makes sense. Like, look, we could shell out a little more. I'm sure city staff feels much more comfortable that, with the bond than they do, you know, some other source of financing necessarily because it's a guaranteed income over a certain period of time with a predictable payback. So, and I think as we make strides both, um, on the sewer bonds and things along those lines, it'll open up a little of that power for the council to actually go out and do this for other things. So, yeah.
Now, you're running for reelection.
I am.
Earlier in the show, this is your second term that you're, you're running for. Um, and there's nine, you're one of nine candidates.
I'm the lone incumbent.
Lone incumbent. There's nine people running for what will be three seats.
Right.
Um, and what, what do you think about in terms of carrying that message to the public as an incumbent? Um, you know, the value of experience, uh, in, in doing this job. I mean, what?
Yeah.
I guess I can ask it this way. What did, what did you learn in your first year or two on this job that really has proven invaluable for you?
Yeah. Well, I, I certainly learned how to have thicker skin. That, that has definitely occurred. Uh, you know, I've, I've really, like you said, I've always enjoyed, um, both the budgetary aspects and the political aspects of cities and how they work and run. Um, so I have gotten just the best lessons and, and learned a lot in terms of, you know, what the council does, how we function, what we can get done and what we can't from sitting up there on the dais. And, uh, you know, a lot of the other positions that people don't necessarily think about that we have to fulfill a role in too, have been a, a big thing as well. So I'm, I'm the representative for the Butte County Association of Governments. My knowledge of the Butte County Association of Governments, when I came into office, was not huge. I knew who they were and what they did, but I didn't have a lot of information on them. Uh, same with Butte County Air Quality District, uh, Management District. That's something that I would have, if you would have asked me, I would have said, I am not going to enjoy that. That is just not going to be fun. I can't imagine talking about air quality all day long. I love that position. I've been chair for air quality for, I don't know, almost four years now. And it has been an absolute joy. And we've made substantial improvements on air quality in Butte County under the guise of what that board does, because I will certainly not take all the credit for it. We have a fantastic executive director over there. And we've made substantial impacts. Um, whether it's getting grant money to replace out wood burning stoves or things along those lines. Um, you know, it's just been a huge impact. Of course, the fires have kind of decimated our, our, our goal, my personal goal of having the best four years of air quality ever, uh, pretty much been squashed by the, uh, car fire. But, um, but obviously that's been a big tragedy for folks too. So, um, but in, in looking at it, there's a lot of things where you don't necessarily have a lot of knowledge coming in. Um, I, I certainly didn't have the knowledge back then I do now about LAFCO, um, or, or those aspects. So I think that just comes with time on a government body where you end up learning those, those ins and outs.
Right.
Yeah.
And you talked about the fires. Uh, this has been, this has been a controversy this summer as we've had another bad, bad fire year, of course. This idea of, you know, are we doing enough to clear the fuel and, and, and how environmental issues affect that to a certain extent? Um, what, what's your take on that? I mean, do you feel like, you know, I, I, I think I know your answer to this, but I'd like to hear you say it. You know, in, in terms of, of regulations, are, are these too onerous? Are we creating unintended consequences that are causing worse outcomes for us as citizens of, of the North State?
Well, actually my answer might be a little different. So, um, I had a, a pretty huge tragedy in, in my life, uh, back in October during the Cascade Fire, uh, because my father was actually one of the victims of that fire. Um, and I obviously saw firsthand, uh, my childhood home where I was raised in La Marica and, and my, my father's, um, and I actually haven't talked about this publicly at all, but, uh, his fiance was, was in the fire with him and also passed away. So that was, uh, obviously personally difficult on, on many levels and still is every single day. Um, you know, I've, I've always been a proponent of having a fully-staffed fire department. And I've lost that battle to predictably fund fire. Uh, and, and Ann Schwab actually is, again, reaching across the aisle, um, has been one who has, has also joined me on that, that fight. And we have not gotten far in terms of, of having a properly-staffed, um, fire team. And we have not gotten far in terms of, of having a properly staffed, um, fire team. And we have realized the consequences of, or I won't say the consequences of it, because that's not the accurate statement. The, the accurate statement would be the risk. We've realized the risk of it with big fires in Upper Park, uh, big fires around the city of Chico. Um, and we need to have our city well protected. And it's hard to, for people to realize that they need to spend money on something to prevent something. You know, it's like buying insurance and, and a, a fire department is like that. Besides what they do on a daily basis in terms of saving lives and dealing with accidents and, and, uh, you know, smaller fires too. And in terms of our surrounding community and the community as a whole, we need them there as our first line of protection against something that's very real. Um, and a lot of people kind of just schluff it off to, you know, oh, well, the fire risk isn't as minimal for the city of Chico. And, and a fire around us is, you know, that actually could burn through a number of homes is never going to happen. And I can tell you, having it personally happened to members of my family and watching and seeing how much havoc that actually raised in a very minimal amount of time is just beyond the scope of anything you can believe. Um, and, you know, you're talking about, um, Dad's house had, uh, you know, probably two, 300 feet of defensible space. And it did not help. That fire was fast. It was ferocious. Uh, same thing with car fire. Um, a lot of these fires aren't burning on federal land. Um, I certainly think we need better forest management without a doubt. I think hands-off is not the way to go. I think we're years behind budgetary wise for us actually going in and having proper forest management. It's been something that's neglected. Um, but a lot of these fires aren't caused by that. These fires are caused by really high temperatures, really high winds. Um, you know, and I'm not a big, uh, you know, you're going to sit here, if we, we were to talk climate change, I will tell you, at the end of the day, I'm not going to say I'm a big proponent of climate, climate change and that it's affecting our world around us, but I will tell you this, it is our world and we need to take care of it. And that means sometimes, and, and I find this on the air quality stuff that we do there, is sometimes you have to make concessions for the environment that make all the sense in the world to me as someone who thinks that I should leave this planet better than I found it. And maybe that's just a religious principle. Maybe that's just a mom telling me a lot, clean up after you're outside playing in, you know, where, where Dad's house was in, in Lo Marica. Um, you know, so I, I just have a huge respect for nature and, and everything around it. But, um, you know, we can manage it to a certain degree, but, uh, mother nature is very furious. And, uh, and certainly seems to be getting worse.
Yeah. Well, my condolences. I didn't realize that about your, your dad and your dad's fiance.
It was a hard loss.
Of course. Um, do, do you think that, that we lose track of the, the human element of that? In the political debates of these things where we say, well, you know, you're a climate denier, you're a climate change believer. And, you know, all this stuff that people want to whip up, uh, you know, some of it's from business, some of it's just from people's belief systems.
Oh, I, I can tell you without a doubt that I, I think on both sides, it's, it's politically for sure driven, uh, economically driven. Um, you know, I've, I've hosted, uh, actually in the city of Davis. I put on a green home and garden show and I had a hard time figuring out why the windows shipped from Southern Cal, Carolina that were completely recycled material were better than the ones made in Sacramento in terms of what the value was for the environment. So I think some of it's a marketing tool, but like you said, the really comes down to the fact of, and I wish we could get it out of politics and I think it should be out of politics. Because I think if you asked every single person in elected office, do you think we should take care of this planet? Let's forget about whether you believe we're in climate change and go back and forth with the ridiculous arguments back and forth, because there are some ridiculous arguments. And just say, look, do you think we should take care of the planet? And if so, to what degree? You know, are you a one to 10 on the scale? Or you think we should just trash the place while we, we, you know, reap and sow whatever we can for the current population? Or should we protect everything on the off chance that we're going to be here for billions and billions of years? And, or should we find somewhere nice in the middle or more closely to the, the conserve side?
Well, there's an interesting book that I'm reading right now. You might, you might appreciate this book. It's called Collapse, written by a guy by the name of Jared Diamond.
Yeah.
And he's a, God, he's, he's a, he's a polymath. He's, he's everything. He's a PhD like three times over. Uh, you're also wrote a great book called Guns, Germs and Steel. And he, he talks about looking at, 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 um, cultures in the past that collapsed, Easter Island.
Right, sure.
Um, you know, the, uh, the Maya, various colonies and various cultures that collapsed and why? And it almost all was because of overlogging. It was a big cause of a lot of it. And, and climate change isn't really something he talks about a lot. It's really other things. It's like the way you deal with your neighbors, you know, your other, other cultures around you trade. And logging is a big one, salinization of soils, a lot of that kind of stuff.
Absolutely.
Really interesting to look at that. And, and, but the commonality was people didn't think beyond their own generation generally. Even people that had kids would say like, well, you know, we're just going to use this. It's there to be used.
Yeah.
And that kind of short-sighted view was really the common link many times.
Yeah. And, and I think folks on the conservative side actually, you know, have a, a lot of, um, you know, even my, my counterparts on the council, I would say have a concern for the environment. Like they certainly understand, um, that they want the earth to be better than they let, you know, when they arrived.
Um, yeah. And that's a, that's a broader discussion even beyond the ecology, the environment, the hot, whole idea that again, it was just what we started with in this conversation an hour ago where, you know, we're going to get beyond our, our corners, our teams and begin to find that common ground.
Yeah.
And, you know, e- even in a city like Chico, which is not a, the biggest city in the world, it's a, it's a medium-sized town, city. There's a lot of differences. There's a lot of people who are passionate about what they believe and, and we're not getting together enough.
Yeah. No, no, we're not. And, and I'd love to see more of that conversation. Um, I'd love to see it as we move forward in the next couple of years, as we get our budget problems back together. And then, you know, we're going to have to deal with the state pension issue and we're going to have to be united to do that. Uh, we really are, uh, as a council, as a city, um, as a state, as this issue moves forward, it is going to be all encompassing.
Yeah.
And everybody will be talking about it if, uh, the predictions are and, and economist after economist says that's what will happen. And, and I have a hard time believing that it won't.
Yeah, yeah. It's, 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 you're probably right. I mean, I think that inevitably we're going to have to realize that there's more pulling us together than pulling us apart. And, and we're, you know, uh, the thing that always bugs me is in this whole discourse is people accusing others of not loving the country, not being good Americans, not being patriotic or whatever it is. I mean, you always start from the point of, of that we, well, we're all good citizens. We all love our country. We all love the world. We want, we want good things for, for the world.
Absolutely. And, you know, and that's what I try to tell people is, you know, everybody I know, regardless of what side of the aisle they're on, and I have friends on both sides of the aisle.
Me too.
And, uh, look, we all want our children to do better than we did. We all want to leave behind something better. We all want to make an impact that's substantial and, and significant in terms of moving us forward. And whether that's genetically programmed into us, or if it's, you know, our parents nurturing us into that sentiment or whatever it is. In the places that I've been around the world and throughout our country, that's what I've seen. That is the connecting factor through all humanity. And people, you can take anyone and they want their children to do better and they want them to have a successful life. And they will sacrifice whatever they need to, to make that happen. So, yeah, I, I think it really is a, something that we need to have more of a real conversation about. I think a lot of these things that we talk about back and forth are just, uh, drivel. I mean, they're, they're unimportant. They're, they don't add to the conversation. And I don't think we have time to spend and waste our time and effort on them.
Agreed. Well, Andrew Coolish, thanks for an interesting conversation. Really interesting. I got to a lot of good stuff. I, I think that, that our gear has got a good, good sense of who you are and I appreciate it for joining us. And that is our show.